The door open, that way we can not feel claustrophobic.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you much.
Okay, is it on?
Yeah, oh, I just did it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so tonight, the Lebanon Board of Appeals is meeting to, I had the request of Peter Wallstrom and Diane Monroe of 457 West Lebanon Road. We have a lot on there, I guess we do somewhere. It's tax map U8, lot number 19. And the Wallstroms are petitioning the board. They want to split their lot and create a 50-foot right-of-way to the back lot from the front lot. And I guess that's causing some problems. So first, I'd like to actually ask everybody if you don't mind to stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag. It's right in the back corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'm the chairman of the Lebanon Board of Appeals. My name is Deborah Wilson. This is Michael Parker. Did you get sworn?
Yes, I did.
So Michael is our newest full-voting board member of the Board of Appeals. And this is Lyle Dool, also a full-voting member of the Board of Appeals. Three people constitutes a quorum of our board. So we have the right to open the meeting, and it will entertain the open public hearing. Anybody? Okay, all in favor? Okay. And we have with us Steve McDonough, who is our code enforcement officer, and Jen Griffin, who is our land clerk. So what we like to do first is we like to hear from the applicant himself. This is a public hearing, and there will be time for you guys to ask questions or to give statements further on in the agenda. So if you hear anything that you want to ask a question about, please write it down. And later, there will be time for you to ask or have input. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Wallstrom.
Mr. Pete, Peter Wallstrom.
Pete.
We have had, in the last five years, some health issues. And we've been told finally by the doctors, get a one-story house. Well, we're in the old farmhouse in front, which has a lot of charm, but it's not one-story. And it's bluntly too much for us in our condition right now. What we proposed to do was build a one-story ranch, handicap accessible. The plans are out there. I'm having them redrawn, but we've seen the house itself. Friends of ours built one years ago. Very comfortable, very nice fitting house. And we wanted it up on top of the brow of the hill, in the backfield, so we could look over the pond and where we got married. And watch a lot of animals that we don't see out front. We thought we could be able to put, I need an 18-foot driveway, but a 50-foot right-of-way on these pieces of paper here. Everything is, everything is from the front road back to the line. And through here, there's a couple good old barns, farm buildings. And in measuring, we've ended up with, I don't know where it goes. We've ended up with a very tight situation here on the, follow it on the gray, two-color gray right there. We've ended up with a very tight situation by the two barns. Ah, thank you. And the two barns are right there, on that side of the thing.
Right, did you see this, Michael?
Yes, I did.
Where you weren't at the, at the site visit, you saw these two? These are the two that...
And those two spots, yeah, go ahead, take one. Those two spots from the stone wall over here, where the surveyor put the entrance in, we have plenty of road frontage for this piece of property. And we come across, if you're looking and can see the little shed, down from the shed, we come across there to here. And that's 37 feet, I believe. Up here to the little garage, over to here, is 43 plus five feet. In other words, the stake is five feet out from the small garage. From here back, up to the end of this graph, or up to the beginning of the bright yellow there, all right, is the right-of-way with my 200-foot turnaround right there. It's partially pink and partially in the green because we haven't cut the trees yet. Follow what I'm trying to say?
Yes.
Okay. From there on up is personal driveway and everything. Everything will be built to code, in other words, gravel and I'd like a crusher run. But up to the lot line, which is here. You need any more of these?
Could I just ask you, would you mind just sending in, I'll let you take that actually with you. But I'm trying to look at my applicant here and I can't see him through.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I got more.
No, you can take a look, you're licensed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, take a look at it. Oh, no, no problem. That's what they were printed for. All right, so our point of contention are what?
I'm stealing something from that.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Point of contention is really, ah, my bad. Really, right by these buildings that you have in there. One piece is the big, big garage, and that's the tightest, believe it. And yet, when you're standing on the lot, it doesn't look that tight there. And then the next one, okay. The next one is a small garage that were used by the previous owners or something else. And that goes over here to the edge of the stone wall. And that's just a shed for wood. And so what we're trying to do is be allowed this tighter space where we only need a 15-foot driveway. Only one building is going to be, one house is going to be built on that property. Because it's far enough down, we can't break it up. And it's any further down, it's not close to the water setbacks, but any further down, if you were looking at a second home, it's impossible.
Okay.
So it's, and we're setting it up that way as a one-house lot.
How many acres is this completely? How many acres do we have here?
Oh, we have seven acres plus, yeah, seven and a half. We were told it was eight, but...
That's why you survey everything.
Yeah, well, that's why the survey is in there, because there are some surprises that one of our neighbors hasn't seen yet, because the survey just came out just a short time ago. That's what we're after. We're just after the continuation from the road up through here. There's plenty of space here. This used to be used for repair of big trucks. I mean, big, big haulers. So there is space in here. There should be enough space in 15, and this turns out to, turns back to 50. Right beyond that little second garage I told you, it turns into 50 feet. See, it's written right there. So it's only here, well, here, and here.
We have another shed on the other side here too, though, right?
Oh, that's a, that's a cage for wood. It's coming down. That was just slapped up there 18 years ago. It came out of a goat cages inside the barn, and I covered it. Well, good way to dry wood.
Is that the finish of your, your project?
For this, this is what we're here for only, is this little bit right here. Go ahead, ask questions.
Okay, actually, at this time, just, just outline what you just said. I'm actually going to, I usually wait and do this later. But I'm going to actually read into the record the letter of denial by the code enforcement so that we can, because this is a big, big map. And I just want us to focus on the reason for denial here today. This is from the town of Lebanon Code Enforcement Officer, Steve McDonough. And it's dated February 20th, 2019. Property known as 457 West Lebanon Road, Lebanon Main, tax map U8, Lot 19. The title says, regarding lot split and building permit application for Peter Wallstrom. Dear Mr. Wallstrom, recently, we have engaged in multiple conversations regarding the possibility of you splitting the above referenced lot into two lots in a front and rear lot fashion. I had explained the need for road frontage for new lots, and that you need to propose a road that meets the criteria of the Town of Lebanon Lot Size Ordinance 2017. On February 20th, 2019, you presented me with a plan showing the proposed lot split and a 50-foot wide right-of-way that contained the 200 feet of road frontage for the new lot. And it appeared to meet the requirements of the Town of Lebanon Lot Size Ordinance 2017's street frontage requirements. However, the plan also depicts an existing garage structure five feet from the proposed street right-of-way, and an existing shed structure five feet from the proposed street right-of-way. Pursuant to Section 2 of the Town of Lebanon Lot Size Ordinance 2017, distance of structures from boundary setback requirements, any building, including manufactured housing, to be placed on a building lot shall be placed at least 50 feet from any street right-of-way, and at least 25 feet from any other boundary line. Therefore, I find the proposed street right-of-way would create an illegal setback distance for the existing garage and shed. That's part one of two. Oh, this is page two. If anyone has any, and that's just basic, if anybody has any questions. So that's basically the meat of this problem. That's what we're looking at, is that the issue that we're dealing here is, in the creation of this right-of-way, which, which seems to be, have created, you know, properly, it creates a setback issue for the already existing garage and shed. So that's what we're here to hear tonight. So with that, do you, Michael, or do you, Lyle, have any questions for the applicant?
When did you buy the property, it's really you had?
18 and 19 years ago now.
2003, huh?
What?
2003.
2003, okay.
So I think we have that deed actually right in our packet here.
I did get a deed, didn't I?
I hope so, because if you didn't, then I went ahead and then we're in trouble.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so yes, this is dated November 25th, 2003, was when the deed was processed. Anything else, Lyle? Michael?
No.
So I have a couple of questions.
Good.
Sorry. What is it that you propose to do with this piece of property?
We'll finish fixing it up once we move out of it. And we'll sell that front piece.
So your plan is to sell that?
I have to.
And will that sale include this garage and shed?
Yes.
Could you ask that question again?
The sale of this existing property, I'm not going to ask him again, I'll tell you what he said.
Yeah.
Will include that garage and shed.
So you guys intend to sell that?
You can't ask him any questions.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
In time.
Okay, so next we're going to, now we will move into the next phase of this, and that would be for the public to ask questions of the applicant. Please be orderly, raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and you can ask your question. Anyone? Okay.
Did I understand that correctly, that those barns will be sold, and you go to sell that?
They'll be sold as a total package of the house, because we don't have enough land. That's 2.1 on the front.
2.21.
2.21 on the front, and the back is the balance of the property.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay.
I'm going to make some comments. My name is Alan Shepard.
Okay.
So I'm just going to make some comments, if I could.
As long as they're relevant to what we're hearing.
I, yes. But I didn't come to tell you other things. I wanted to talk about this case. I represent the Handels, I'm an attorney.
Okay.
You represent who?
The Handels.
Oh, I know them, yes.
Oh, who are the Handels?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And the Handels operate a farm that's like right adjacent to this property. I don't know if you people, if you might, I heard you might have, it's a farm. So they're concerned about the development of this property, and they asked me to kind of look at the zoning, just to see, you know, how this all works. And, you know, so I have a couple of comments. One is, you know, a lot in the town of Lebanon has to have road frontage. And road frontage has been, and Mr. Wallstrom's not the first person who ever threw this, you know, road frontage has been sort of, kind of rigged in a way by other people. That's what people do, to kind of create a road frontage, even though you're not on a road, you know, as we view it. So that's what, you know, allows him to create a second lot. Now, the ordinance says that he has to comply with the setbacks. But he has a right to come to you folks, as the Zoning Board of Appeals, and says, give me a variance. Give me a relaxation from the zoning, so I can do what I need to do to my property. So that's really what you're about. But when you look at the application, you know, it talks about, if you're going to get, if you're going to ask for variance, you have to meet certain standards.
We haven't gotten to that point in our deliberation yet. We deliberate that after the fact. That's not part of the public hearing.
Well, it needs to be part of the public hearing, because I have a right to comment on it.
Well, you have a right to comment on it, but you don't have a right to direct the board. That's my job.
I'm not directing anybody.
Okay, just making sure.
I'm just commenting on the process.
Make your comment, Deb.
All right, thank you. So the variance standards are, you know, right in your application. And the first standard is that the need for the variance is because the applicant cannot get a reasonable return on their property unless you give them the variance. In other words, there's going to be an economic hardship to the applicant, the landowner, unless the zoning...
We know what these are. So could you just make your statement with, well, no, you're not just going to. You're not going to direct my board. Make your statement with regard to this, okay? Then make your statement, and let's move on with this.
Well, the statement...
This isn't Superior Court, this is a local appeals court.
This is a legal proceeding.
It is, and I'm the chairman of this. So we don't, we know what our job is, and we don't need you to direct us. We need you to make your statement regarding that, and then leave that alone.
I've been doing this for 35 years.
Right, I've been doing it with me.
I'm the chairman, okay? So I have a right to just address the board and explain to the board, at least from my client's perspective, what the standard is that this applicant has to meet before you, because that's what you're going to decide.
Excuse me a moment. Do you understand the standards that we have to, do you understand the standards that we apply to this?
Yes, I do.
Do, I would like to make a motion right now that we skip hearing him tell us what we do for a job.
I'm not trying to tell you how you do it.
I second that.
I'll tell him.
So you're not going to allow me to talk?
I'm going to allow you to make a statement with regard to each hardship criteria, but you don't need to go into a lengthy discussion of what the hardship criteria includes. We know that. This is what we do. So if you have a problem with the first hardship criteria, could you please state that problem?
Well, that's what I was about to tune, and it got interrupted.
Well, it was five minutes of waiting for it. So just make that statement now, and let's move on.
Okay, is this being recorded by me?
It is.
Okay, good. So the first prong of the hardship is that the need for the hardship, the need for the variance is based on that the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return as a result of what the zoning allows. And what that means is that he can't really utilize his property and realize a gain from the property because the zoning doesn't allow him to. So a typical example would be if someone had a house and they couldn't build it.
Mr. Shepard, I'm going to ask you again, make your point. We don't need the examples. Make your argument.
This is my argument, this is my point. If I can't talk in terms of what I interpret it to be, then you're not allowing me to just do my job, which is, this is a public hearing, I can speak in a public hearing.
You can speak in the public hearing, absolutely. But what I've asked you to do is make your point.
And I try to do, and you keep on interrupting me. So all I'm trying to say is that there has to be a showing by the applicant. The burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that they cannot get a reasonable return as a result of the current zoning. So that typically means that someone couldn't build. If you already have a house, you're getting a reasonable return on your property. So reasonable return doesn't mean the ability to be able to get a second lot out of your property. That's not what a reasonable return is. It's not unreasonable for this gentleman to ask for this. I'm not saying it's not unreasonable, but from the standpoint of the law, you can't, it doesn't mean that you get maximum return for your value. It just means that you are not getting any return. And in this case, since there is a house there with other improvements, it doesn't meet that standard. And that's really what my main point is. So beyond that, I don't think the other standards really come into play. So you'll be happy to hear that I have nothing to say.
Very happy.
But despite some reasonable return, is I just don't think that they can establish that as a matter of the standard that needs to be applied. Thank you, nothing further.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Did I see you lose your hand?
No, I'm, I'm, I just have a question, this is, you know what I mean, but I have a question.
Oh, sorry, your name is?
George, I'm George.
George, okay.
Why couldn't you put the right-of-way on the other side? No room?
Well, and...
No room, and a well and a septic are on the other side.
Or the part of the, bust the road here. You couldn't come closer to the house there? Same thing.
You may not understand what you were showing, George.
I'm just curious why, you know, you couldn't come here, you answered that wall, you couldn't move it this way.
Move it which way? Bring it, oh, we're trying to...
Follow the law.
We're trying to save the stone wall and the essence of this building, because it all looks...
Because that's where it's tight, right?
Right here, this, right there, and right there are the two tight spots. Everything else is wide open. Does that help?
No, I just, you know...
Okay, well, that's good.
Anybody else? Did you have, did you have anything else, Mr. Wallstrom? Okay, so now we're actually going into part four on our agenda, if you're following along. And this is the presentation by code enforcement officer. Basically, he can answer to anything that he just heard. He can make additional presentations. And then usually, this is where I read his letter into the record, but we've already done it, so I won't repeat that.
Yeah, well, reading the letter is basically my presentation.
I think I need to do that again unless somebody else wants to hear it again.
Did you have anything else after hearing all of the? Okay, so now, is this time, if you have any questions or any statements to make to the code enforcement officer, not you.
Not me.
You wait. This is your time, actually. If you have any questions for code enforcement? Okay.
No, there's so much to question, but I'd like to just say that we're disappointed that the property that we're talking about is being broken up as a farm. We bought the budding property, we own the lot just to the north here.
Yeah, just on here, there.
And we bought it back about 12 or 13 years ago, a little more, basically, because at the time, there was quite a bit of development on farmly-infrontage roads throughout town. Just unbelievable back in that timeframe. We've seen some more of that recently. But it troubled us so greatly that when the property became available, we felt the need to do whatever we had to do to buy and keep it off the development plate. Not so much to preclude growth of the town, because we think Lebanon's growth is important, but we were just very tired and disturbed by a lot of the farm that was disappearing. We are surprised that Pete and Diane feel the need, but we understand some of the motivations for them to break up the farm. But again, we're not growing new farms. There aren't places like this just popping up that are available to people to maintain the sense of community that we have out there. And just want to say that we're very much against this project as we see it, not so much to preclude him from being able to do something that he wants to do on his land, but because it's not a clean shot, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here if this wasn't a problem. And because it is, we just want to express that. We're not really happy about it, and we don't support the plan. My wife Karen.
Okay, so you don't, do you have anything to say to that? So I'll actually give you a little bit of that. The project of breaking it up and splitting it into two lots is not what we are actually hearing here today. The, that whole, that whole thing is his right. Okay, there's a property on it to do that.
Had it be a right-of-way, it's...
And we're only here about the right-of-way and being too close to the shed and the garage. So I don't want you to think I'm ignoring you or not understanding your feelings about the property next door to you, I do. But, but I can't really address that, because it's not, that's his right.
And I understand, had it be clean, we would be here on a variance request.
Right.
I just want to express...
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
Is there just one problem that you see with this, is the setback, is that the problem?
That's the only problem I saw.
That's the problem.
Okay. So at this time, we move into section number five, and that is time for the property owner to go ahead and make any other statements, rebuttal statements against anything that he's heard here.
Okay. I understand where they come from on that. Actually, we do ourselves, but we're in a position that medical doctors have told us we have to get it down onto one floor. We don't want to move from the town. We like the property, we were married down by the pond. And in a great sense, we have the same feeling for the property as they do, but for a different reason. We're literally forced to build a one-story home. It'll be attractive and well-done. I've been in the industry for a long time. And then finish fixing up this and make this an attractive piece. We have no choice in that sense, that it's our health. We've already been moved downstairs into the house. Is that neat?
Yeah, that's him.
Sorry. Didn't sound like mine. But we've already been moved downstairs, no stairs, stuff like that. We're trying to do something that, yes, breaks up the land, but yes, is, we've allowed so much space and openness around that it actually will enhance it overall. I'm just saying the differences of opinion, I've been aware of those. We're, that's basically where we're coming from.
Okay, you got it?
That's it, I think.
Lyle, any que- oh.
That land hadn't been found for quite a while, even their piece of property that they bought.
Well, that's okay, yeah.
I mean, it wasn't really, you know.
So, so what you're saying is that it's, it has not been utilized as farming?
So they did their own thing on there, that's when they bought it.
No, I'm talking about your property.
No, it's never really been a farm, farm. It's, uh, but hey, we had to be, that's literally like BK field.
So probably at one point it was quite a larger farm.
Oh, it was.
Oh, that was all, that whole area was one.
Maori's owned it, and it had one, two, they had Josh's land, they had, uh, Karen and Matt's land. Uh, yeah, it was.
Way there.
But that was.
Quite a while ago.
In the sixties, seventies.
Uh, actually, um, can I say something here?
Uh, can you just wait for a few minutes so I'm sure he's done? Okay.
So basically, our biggest reason for moving up there is we want to stay in town. We like the neighborhood, they've been great with us, to us during a tough five years, and we tried to do, we're trying to do it as softly as we can. We don't really have a whole lot more options.
Sell the property.
Well, move away, but that's not, that doesn't.
What they'll do with it, so, yeah.
Isn't what we're after.
Okay, and then we're going to give one more chance for the public.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, the property hadn't found when we, uh, first moved up here, it was one of the sites that was requested by Re-Elaborator for application of biosolids. Maori, at the time, had owned the property, and, um, it was applied for hay, so as of nineteen ninety-two or three, I think, when the sledge issue was here in town, um, there was a permit, and there was, there was a request for permitting for applications of biosolids for remediations of the soil and for fertilizer.
So about thirty years ago?
No, not quite that long ago, it was nineteen ninety-two, I believe.
Ninety-two.
Quite a long time bought it.
At, at that time, the town ended together and did, um, thank goodness for Hebo-Haibo, where the state recognized the town's ability to self-govern and rule and control applications of materials just like that sledge. So my, my point, the reason I'm saying this is that, number one, it was found as recently as nineteen ninety-one or ninety-three, excuse my time frame, because there was an application for biosolids application.
And then we, and the project was.
And then, you know, we, well, uh, related to Pete's property, um, it was in farm news.
Okay. Okay, so, um, at this time, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing, which means that there won't be any more input from the public or from the applicant, this is our time to deliberate, um, this case. If we should have a question for any of you regarding your statements or, sir, regarding your project, um, excuse me?
Will be out front.
No, you can stay right there if you want.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't kick you out.
Shut my mouth.
No, this is a public hearing, so everybody's able to stay, you're able to.
Okay.
Uh, watch the process, and we welcome you to do that.
Good.
Okay, so, um, at this time, fellas, unless you have another question, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
One more question.
Oh, hold on, yeah.
Is it too late now?
No, go right ahead.
So, the reason that, the whole deal is about how narrow it is when it gets down towards the road, that's the whole deal. If you have fifty feet all the way down, you'd be all set, is that correct?
No, um, the issue seems to be, oh, do you want, do you, we're trying to, you can go ahead, I'll defer to you.
Well, he, he does have fifty feet, the issue is that structures won't, there are some structures.
Well, the structures are too close to the right of way.
Just halfway up the drive, these two things right there, and then it kicks out to fifty feet, it goes.
Yeah.
From there to that, all the way up.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it was the building, it's the brush now.
That's the, that's the problem that we're hearing here. Okay, you want to close our public hearing, guys? Somebody make a motion?
I make a motion, close. Okay, a second.
I'll tell you that. Okay, so as, um, I had stated, the public hearing is now closed, um, that means that we don't take any other information unless a board member asks you a direct question, you're free to stay and hear the proceedings, um, or you're free to go, um, that's up to you. Um, so, let's start with our hardship criteria. If I can find one. Okay, here we go. Okay, so, um, under the, um, Lebanon Border Appeals Ordinance, Section Four, which talks about variance, um, it tells us that, uh, the board shall not grant a variance unless it finds that the strict application of the ordinance to the app- appellate and the appellate's property would cause undue hardship. Undue hardship will be found only when all four of the following criteria are met. So normally, we do things a little bit different here, we talk about each hardship criteria, we take a little consensus vote, and then we move on to the next one. Those consensus votes are only for our use, so that we know how we're feeling about each item. Um, sometimes we say we'd rather wait and not talk about it, uh, what matters is our final, um, decision altogether, because sometimes we hear things that change our mind about how we voted on the straw vote, um, sometimes we get thinking about it a little bit. So, um, if you hear us talking about it and you think, yes, they're saying no, don't second guess us, because it all comes down to the final, uh, how we vote in the final variance request. So, um, the first, um, first criteria is the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. So how do we feel about that? Do we feel that this property can yield a reasonable return simply as it is?
Yes, yes.
I as well. Um, B, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. So do we feel that this, uh, need for a variance, uh, is created, um, by something other than something that the applicant or, 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 um, did when it was chosen as a place to live? Or do we feel that, uh, that this is, uh, not unique to the property?
You want to explain that again?
I can read it. Does it keep out all wrong? Yeah, I needed to.
Strong right now.
So the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general condition of the neighborhood. So, so what we're looking at is.
It's not unique.
It's not, it's, no, is due to the unique circumstance of the property. So in other words, it's a need that's caused by something that is unique to this particular property and not to.
Right.
Generally out there.
I don't see anything unique about the neighborhood or anything, it's just a very normal neighborhood, nothing unique.
Michael?
I agree.
I also. Um, the granting of a variance will not alter the essential character of the locality.
I don't think it alter, will alter the character of the neighborhood.
Mike?
I don't think it does.
I don't think it would, I don't think a variance would alter this property or the neighborhood at all, so. Uh, the hardship is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner.
It's being taken by the owner, it's obvious, so.
Right. So with that said, we've, we're kind of in agreement that this, the hardships here don't push us, uh, to grant a variance in this. However, we still have the, the right to, to make a suggestion here, um, and personally, I would say to you that you, you could build your house if you get rid of that garage and that shed, I mean, it's.
Over there.
I know, I know, it's a difficult choice, but I'm just saying, you, you have this permit dead to rights if you get rid of that garage and shed, and, and unfortunately, uh, that's the way I'm looking at that, but.
It's not specific to this.
Right.
But maybe you could come to some kind of agreement with him purchasing that land that he's gonna put up for sale and give them a right of way.
Yeah, that's not going to happen, because he has to have the street frontage, Mike, which is what this is, um, back here, it's fifty feet, fifty feet, fifty feet, fifty feet.
I mean, the other landowners.
Yeah, but he still has to have it to build.
So that they could get a land agreement for use of right of way.
No, because he still doesn't have the street fronted back here to build it.
Right, but if that land was traded for the right of way, then you don't lose it to a person they don't know, still being used for farming, they get use of it, and then he gets this right of way, that's per their land.
Yeah, I see.
I mean, it's more difficult, but.
Right, um, so, um, I guess now we're just going to, we all, you know, just give you a little bit of a piece of advice, what we see, uh, I don't know if you want to say what you see with this, but.
The simple answer is tear the garage down.
The garage has to go.
Garage has to go.
Garage has to go.
If you, I know that it's part of the property and everything to you, um, you know, and it may be special and hold memories and stuff, but if you, if you get rid of that garage, you're golden, you know? So at this time, uh.
Both garages and barns or just like one?
Uh, this garage and the shed, the ones that are too close.
Are too close?
They're too close, they're on that side, that whole side.
So at this time, I'm.
It takes it out of our hands, it takes it out of our hands, puts it back to the buildings.
And, and the code enforcement has said that it's the only issue that he sees, and I can't see, I mean, it's just too close, I can't even see my way past that variance, it's just too close, it's not like it's, it's twenty feet away or thirty feet away, it's right there on that, you know, and somebody else is gonna own this property, so, so that's my issue with that. But, um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we deny this variance, um, on the ground that it's just too close.
I, I'd just like to say, you know, th- this kind of thing, I hate this, this.
We all do.
There's a conflict between your head and your heart, almost in every situation, and unfortunately, the people sitting in these three chairs are stuck with making that decision, and, but we, you know, we feel for you, and we have compassion for you, because we're human beings, but at the same time, we've got to honor the law, and like one guy has said, Lebanon is lawless, and once we start pushing that law, you know, we've got a line out there coming in here saying, we want this, we want that, and before long, you just take the law and throw it in the basket. I mean, so, the state puts down such rigid regulations, it's obvious the state doesn't want us to give variances, you know, and it, it.
I mean, we do try.
We try.
We try.
We try, but it, it's.
Sometimes push the envelope a little bit, but this one is just too close.
And with those buildings going, doesn't need a variance.
Right.
That's why.
With, with, with the buildings gone, with those two buildings, the garage and the shed gone, you won't even need a variance.
The code enforcement.
This will, this will, this will be doable for you. And so, it, you know, w- w- we'd be hard pressed to vary from the law when a simple removal of the two buildings, which aren't necessary structures, w- will ease this burden for you, and you'll be able to have your, your permit through the regular law, you know, you'll be able to be permitted for this.
So we would lose value in the property that we were selling.
I don't think that you're gonna lose a whole lot of value on that, you know, I really don't, because first thing, when you purchased the property, it wasn't split, and now you're splitting it and you're building a second home in the back, so I, I, you know, I mean, that would be your first hardship criteria, and we did not find that.
Would we be given a time span to get rid of those, or do we have to get rid of them today to get the permit?
You would have to, I mean, that would have to actually go through our code enforcement officer, that's his decision, that's not our decision. Um, our decision, right now, there's a motion on the table to, uh, to deny this variance.
Can we let Steve answer him?
Um, actually, that's, it's not, he, he can answer him afterwards, but that's not part of our proceeding.
We'll put it on you.
No, somebody's gonna second my motion or not.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm in favor? Okay, so at this time, the, uh, the variance for this project is denied, but I do encourage you, because I know how special that pond area is to you, that's where you were married, and.
Mm-hmm.
I do encourage you to just follow through with this and do the right thing and, uh, come in and see Steve and.
Better change the house.
I know.
Tear the house down.
I know, but the house isn't too close, so.
Well, if we tore the house down, we.
What about pushing it back, you know, where you could push it back?
Before the barn?
Yeah, part of the way.
No, I checked that out.
Yeah.
Why, there's enough room.
No, we looked, we did look, that's like I say, we tried to look for people and, and look out for people, but, but in this case, it's, there's just no, no way we can get around that. So, um, if you do want to go forward with this, and, and I know, like I said, how special that pond area is to you, you've mentioned you were married there, so, you know, I encourage you to, uh, to, to look into your options with Steve.
And you have the option of going, the old one does, to, to a court, and have a judge look at it through time, that's it.
So I was actually getting to that part, so that is, um, we haven't closed our meeting yet, so, um, I'm actually just getting to that part, and that is the, um, I flip these papers a lot, I can't ever find what I want. These are variances. Okay, so now, um, our decision gets written up, and it gets written up as a report of fact and finding, that, um, will be here, um, for you to pick up if you should choose, you don't have to, it goes into your permanent bio. Um, a copy of, um, of that also, um, can be used to apply to Superior Court, which is in Alfred, do you know where that is?
Yeah.
So, um, uh, you can go to Superior Court, uh, you have to file a, a law with the state statute within forty-five days of the date of today's decision. This is the date of, of our verbal decision, uh, and we, uh, we now have ten days to have that decision written as fact and finding and ready for anybody, uh, who wants a copy of that to be here at the, um, town office. And, uh, I'll tell you that it's a lot of writing, so usually it takes me ten days to get it done, so don't expect it before then, but usually, um, it's ten days, and usually when I, I get it here and, uh, it's all signed, uh, Jen will give you a call and you can come on down, pick it up, and again, anybody is, uh, welcome to a copy of that. Uh, also, uh, just so that you know, and I, I don't think it's gonna happen in this particular case, but anybody, uh, that was a part of this proceeding has the right to, to appeal that decision, not only you, it's anybody that, uh, has the right, and they also have the right to ask, you know, to come back, or you do too, to, um, come back within fifteen days of this decision, if you have new evidence for or against, or whatever the case may be, you can come back within fifteen days and ask for a reconsideration of this board, that's also your right. Um, so, you know, if you decide before you go to Superior Court, you'd like to come in, maybe show some new reasons, or you have some new evidence or whatever that you, you like, that's, uh, included al- already in what you paid for, so you can come back and ask for reconsideration. Okay? So at this time, I'd like to, uh, close our meeting and, uh, close off the video, and then you can talk to Steve, or you can talk to Steve, or whoever wants to talk to Steve can corner him and.
Second that.
I'm in favor? Okay, thank you.
You want, you want this copy here?
Uh, Jen, do you have this copy already, or Steve, do you already have this?
I have a small one.
Would you like to have this for us?
Take the big one.
Want the big one?
No.
If, when you, if you come back with it, bring it back.
Okay, should we put it in that room?
I don't think they need it, you know, it's fine.